Is called to order at 6:03 PM. 6:03? I'm going to ask Councilwoman Manning to please do the invocation today, and Mayor Pro Tem Angie Reyes English to do the pledge of allegiance, please. You're not feeling too voice wise? Okay. I'll ask Councilmember Montero to do the invocation today.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you bow your head, please? Dear Father, thank you for this meeting. Thank you for bringing us together, the residents and this council, and thank you for all the blessing that you're going to give us and the wisdom to make sure that we conduct business with respect, dignity, and good stuff for the city of Hawthorne. Amen.
Amen.
Can you please rise? Lift your hand over your heart, repeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Manning. Councilmember Manning. Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Angie Reyes English.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Thanks to all of you. Thanks to everybody who's out in the audience, and all those people that are watching right now are going to watch a recorded version of this meeting. Our first item is a presentation. Madam Clerk, you have an item from the City Clerk's office. Black History Presentation, please. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, everyone. Just want to talk a little bit about the Black History Month celebration that we had, February 11th. It was a wonderful day. I have a ton of people I want to thank in a video to show, so I just want to get to it. I want to thank Maxine Waters, Senator Bradford, Alex Montero, L. David Patterson, Katrina Manning, Marie Poindexter Hornback. I want to also thank the nonprofits that came out and gave away items. Our commitment, Feed the Streets Cali, the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, and Los Angeles Education Partnership. I want to thank Carla Vasquez, and I want to thank all of the volunteers. I especially want to thank our city manager, Von Norris, who is always so supportive of these things and who keeps us together and keeps us as unified as we can possibly be. The videos that you're going to see now, one is a video that was actually done by Hawthorne resident Jason Harris, who was here. And also, we collectively did a video about what it means to us for Black History Month. So if you guys will cue the videos.
To me, Black History Month is just an opportunity to take some time out and recognize all African Americans have played an integral role in making America what it is today.
My fondest memories of Black History Month is being a child in elementary school, recognizing heroes in the community and learning about those individuals every year. So it reminds me of our leaders that we have in our nation, in our world. It reminds me of the struggle and the commitment that a lot of men and women have made to protect the rights of all people.
It means a great deal. I'm a blended, my family is blended, Latino and Black. My daughters, three adult daughters, seven grandchildren. They recognize as Black. It's important to me for the sole purpose of identity, which my daughters, again, identify as Black. And it gives me great pride in knowing that they have a rich Latino background as well as a Black rooted background.
The Black History Month, you know, it's a time for us to recognize and honor and pay tribute to the journey and to the achievement of all African Americans who have contributed to the greatness of our nation, right, of the United States, and also the war. That is where it's so important for us to celebrate and recognize Black History Month so we can give, you know, all the achievement and accomplishment to the most African Americans that have contributed to this nation.
Black History Month for me is about legacy. A long time ago, when we celebrated Black History Month, a lot of it was focused on slavery and things like that that happened in our past. But I'm really focused on the future. And so Black History Month for me means legacy, the legacy of my family and my children and my grandchildren.
Black history means to me opportunity, growth.
Dana, would you like to pause it until we fix the sound?
A chance to show our culture, to show Black people that hard work's pay off and that our ancestors didn't die in vain, that we had this opportunity to continue to pour into our community and move forward.
Black history means to me about heritage. And heritage, in some ways, means something that we've inherited. So among all the riches within our culture, to me, the soul of it is cooking. I love cooking and cooking is a part of every culture. However, in African American culture, I think cooking runs a little bit deeper than that.
Set goals, you know, give it your all, pursue education, pursue role models. There's a lot of them out there. They may not be on TV, but they're in the community. They're in the business world. They're in the political world. Find role models that you can learn from and emulate and, you know, have pride in who you are and understand that you come from a long lineage of great people.
I just want to remind all of our community of color, basically to continue to rise up, continue to educate our young children, babies, young boys who are going to become men, how important it is to know their rights, more importantly, social justice rights. All of that is very important, as we've seen most currently. And don't settle, you know. Do all you can do, especially as young men and women, and stay encouraged.
One other thing that I have to tell them is to be engaged, to participate in civic engagement, especially when it comes down to voting, right? People have to come out and vote. Because to vote, they express the power that the people have.
To any youth, I'm going to say that, you know, you should invest yourself, invest in yourself, and keep building on your resume. Not your paper resume, your person resume, meaning that your individual resume, your thought process. And just keep continuing to mature and grow and keep sharpening that knife. Don't keep in the drawer and let it go dull. Take it out, sharpen it, and use those talents you have to make our nation and our country a lot better.
Don't give up. Find a mentor. And make sure that you have people that support you, that love you, that pour into you, that believe in you. Make sure that you're always giving back. Those are given, have an opportunity to give.
Young Black men and women all over, I want to tell them to, you know, to believe in themselves and to not believe the stereotypes and the things that people say about, you know, our culture, to excel and to get involved in things that are important to them. A lot of times, a lot of African American people shy away from things like politics and things like that because they feel like they don't have a place in that. And I want young Black people to know that you do have a place in politics. You do have a place in this world, and you do have a place in whatever it is that you want to do. You just stay the course and be true to who you are, be authentically who you are, and everything else will fall into place. But believe in yourself and move forward into spaces that, you know, maybe you wouldn't. Try some new things, stretch yourself a bit, and maybe learn about like politics and things like that. Because those things are important for us as a culture.
My message to them is that, you know, Black history is more than a month. It is a story of where we come from, where we're going, our future, our past, our present. Do your part, you know, be involved. Find out these things, question things. And it's okay to question things. We should. Questions are a sign of a thinking mind. And expand your knowledge as much as you can. Do not let things or people influence or make you forget your culture and where you come from, what it means to you and your family. There's so much there, and there are so many things being removed. And it's up to us now to educate ourselves to keep those traditions and culture alive.
Thank you all so much for that. There's one more video that actually shows the events of the day. It's a short video. And then that will conclude my presentation. I want to thank each and every one of you for everything that you guys did to make that event successful and for your participation in this video and being vulnerable and sharing with us what Black History Month means to you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
To the chair. Thank you, Mayor. City.
Do you have a comment right for that video? Go ahead, just go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you, City Clerk, Ms. Dana, for your hard work and efforts. From the very beginning, you took off running. And let me tell you, it's great to see that in the community, everyone that's benefiting from the City Clerk's office, but more importantly, engaging in the office in all the programs and things that you already have in line on civic engagement and just voting and just anything that has to do with the City Clerk's office, including your recent, you know, your recent food drive, but more importantly, you became a notary. So that's very important, too. And then you're also going to be looking at your certified municipal clerk certificate. So just want to thank you for what you're doing. And this is great. This is the first time that we've had an opportunity to just express what our thoughts are on Black History Month. And just thank you for your leadership.
And I'll also just add really quickly, this video, that when he launches it, is the, almost like a commercial video that Jason produced.
One video here.
I'm sorry?
We only have one video.
He only has one video logged on. Load it on.
Okay, we'll figure it out.
You guys want to just load it on?
I would like that very much because I invited Jason here so that you all could see the work that he did, the hard work that he put into that video, which is so professionally done. It's amazing.
Do you have a USB or was it placed on this computer? Cable, okay. Okay, they're checking now.
Okay. All right. In the meantime, we could still go back. So Madam Clerk, the consent calendar, please. Well, the reading, we have a presentation from, are we ready for that? Are we going to just wait till they set it up? We'll just move on to the next one?
Yes, yes, we can move on to the next item. And there's actually a revisement to the agenda. There's no second presentation.
Yeah, no, I see that. It was like a duplicate. Police Chief Tomatani? You have a presentation on panhandling? You're actually going to present the PSA on that, the Public Service Announcement, so that's great.
Good evening, elected officials, city manager and, sorry about that, and members of the community. My name is Gary Tomatani. I'm the interim chief with the Hawthorne Police Department. And I'm here today to present a PSA that was filmed. A lot of the heavy lifting was done by our city cable staff and by our city attorney's staff. And at the police department, one of the recurring concerns that were constantly questioned on is the issue of panhandlers throughout the city. And what we wanted to do was put a PSA together to kind of let the members of our community know that there are risks involved when you wanted to be charitable and kind-hearted and donate to people that you really have no way of verifying what, how legitimate their solicitations are. So this is the end result of those three city departments, again, city cable, the city attorney's office, and the police department, just for some things for our community members to consider the next time they're approached on our city streets and asked to give a donation.
The Hawthorne Police Department often receives questions asking if the police know about individuals soliciting for various causes throughout the city. Many of our residents want to help those in need but feel uneasy doing so out of concern that the cause a person is collecting for might be false. The city is limited in its ability to control whom or what organizations solicit contributions. However, if you have questions regarding the legitimacy of an organization or person that is soliciting donations, you may check with the city to see if that organization or person has filed a charitable solicitation registration statement with the city as required by the Hawthorne Municipal Code.
On some occasions, individuals will ask for money simply for their benefit. This practice, known as panhandling, is not illegal unless the individual asking for money becomes hostile or aggressive or walks into traffic lanes to collect money as shown in the video. Unfortunately, their presence at these types of locations negatively affects the flow of traffic and poses a safety risk to both the solicitor and drivers. Solicitors tend to leave sidewalks and crosswalks to collect donations in the middle of the lanes of traffic. The flow of traffic is disrupted, and there is even a chance that the solicitor him or herself might get struck by passing cars. The city discourages citizens from contributing to solicitors who enter traffic lanes thereby creating safety hazards. In some occasions, some solicitors may become hostile or aggressive and make the people they approach feel uneasy or obligated to donate. This conduct may become illegal if the demands for money continue even after declining to contribute. In no event should you feel pressured or trapped in handing over money.
We encourage everyone to be charitable, but to exercise your right to say no if you don't feel confident the cause or charity is legitimate. You can always make a positive difference by donating to charities that you feel confident will use the funds for their intended purposes.
So again, I would really like to publicly recognize and thank the city attorney's office for their legal guidance on the wording that we utilized in that PSA and our city cable staff for putting in some time and effort to film us and to edit that entire project. And to the Hawthorne community, again, there's really no way that we can verify the legitimacy of everybody who's soliciting donations on the street. But we would encourage all Hawthorne residents to take time and find a charitable organization that they are comfortable with, that they can do a little bit of research on, not at an intersection throughout our city, and make your charitable contributions through that, through whatever venue that is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. All right. Any comments? You're good?
I just want to say thank you, too. Very important, something that I know, Mayor, yourself, myself, other council members have had concerns and have been giving areas in the community where it's, you know, happening. And so just to have that video and to show folks what it looks like and how scary it is and dangerous it is, the safety factor behind, you know, doing this type of stuff. But yes, absolutely. I'm sure there's ways of giving that is a lot safer. But thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much, Chief. You know that we were talking about it, talked about it with Mayor Pro Tem and other council member colleagues that have mentioned this before. And it's good that we actually have a PSA now that people out there are kind of warmed to, you know, hey, you know what? You give out of your own heart, God rewards you, you know. Shame on the people who are taking advantage of people's charity. But at the same time, that we have a lot of working class people here who are struggling to make ends meet and to feed their own families, but out of the generosity of their heart, they're giving, and we don't want people to take advantage of those people, anybody. So thank you for putting that together. All right, so is there anything else? Okay. Madam Clerk, the guidelines for oral communications?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 549543, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Do we have all the cards up here right now? Okay. Robert Williams cleanup update and AYSO soccer. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and the city council. Last meeting, I came up and then talked about the situation of some garbage that was behind the former 99 cents store. This meeting, I want to actually give kudos because thanks to our city manager and our police chief, I'm not going to call him the interim. I think he should be the chief, had that cleaned up within 24 hours, I think. And so, great job on that. Also want to point out that the AYSO soccer is starting this weekend. And I will be coaching my daughter's team. And we're also always needing volunteers. So ayso21.org if you wish to volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Olivia Valentine, Hawthorne Business Expo.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, elected officials. My name is Olivia Valentine, retired council member for the city of Hawthorne. I'm proud to invite all of you to our eighth Hawthorne Business Expo on April 26, 2023, from 9:30 to 4:00 PM. Our theme this year is Elevating Your Business Using Technology. I think you all got flyers about our expo. Hawthorne Business Expo is your opportunity to connect and network with local businesses and resources to help grow your business. So we have, as we always do, three parts to the expo, the seminars, the panel, and the expo itself. The seminars will feature leaders in their fields, and we're featuring this year leaders in the tech fields to educate you about what your business needs to become a top performer. Our panel discussion will be Elevate Your Business Using Technology. And again, we will have tech experts to discuss how your business can benefit from using technology. I want to, I need to point out also that one of our seminars is going to be a seminar given by Chris Cagle from the South Bay Workforce Investment Board discussing the city's digital gift card program. So we hope by that to benefit the businesses that are there and also to benefit the city with the card program. The expo floor is a tremendous networking opportunity for the public to meet and greet with businesses that are showcasing their valuable products and services. So again, you're invited, you're all invited. It is free to the public, and we hope to have a very dynamic business expo for the eighth time. And our mayor has graciously agreed to give the welcome address. Thank you all.
Thank you. John Monson, request speed bumps? John Monson?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As I stated a few months ago, I'm requesting speed bumps on Cranbrook Avenue in Hawthorne. And I want to know what's happening with that.
Okay. We can't give you a response, but if you want to, the city manager can talk to you offline after the meeting or maybe sidebar with you. How would you like to approach that?
Well, I do have this gentleman's contact, so we will have staff reach out to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to address the city council? Form a line, please, so we can get an idea how many people will it be addressing?
That's funny. For all of this wall? I can just plug this.
Yeah, well, it would have been better if you would have done that before the meeting. I don't think we could coordinate that quickly enough for you. Mr. City Clerk, do you have your thumb drive, too? Does it come in?
He's handling that, yes.
All right. Mr. IT, if you could coordinate both of those. Maybe after the oral communication is over, you could load up the city clerks while we're doing certain things up here.
It's 45 seconds. It's very short. Okay. All righty. Good evening, city council. Tonight, I am here once again on the behalf of the Leon family, parents and sister of Michael Leon. We would like to first truly thank the- We would like to first truly thank the city of Hawthorne for its quick response concerning our proposed project to reinforce safety measures for the residents of Hawthorne, the city council, Public Works Department, Mr. Norris, the Hawthorne Police Department, and fellow residents of our community for their support. Tonight, we have a very short clip we would like to show of Michael, and then I will proceed with my very short presentation. Thank you. The reason the Leon family needed to ensure you saw this short clip was just mainly to put in perspective and really be able to comprehend what this family has lost in that tragic incident. Michael was an excellent student and a very protective brother and a true angel to his parents, Ava and Carlos. As we are officially moving forward with a project near the scene of the accident to ensure that no life is ever lost again, we truly believe it would be appropriate that we honor Michael with a permanent memorial in the city of Hawthorne. We are open to anything that may simply symbolize his life here with us. Michael will unfortunately never have the opportunity to see the change that has come from his tragic accident, but it is impactful and life-changing as this project will most certainly save someone's life. Please support the Leon family and approve moving forward with a plan to memorialize the beautiful soul that was Michael Leon. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anybody else in your group want to address the council? Each person gets a turn if they would like to. ¿Nos quiere relatar algunos datos señora de su hijo? No tiene que...
No se lista.
Okay. Pero le damos nuestras condolencias de parte de la ciudad y el consilio que estamos aquí, ¿okey?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Paolo Volpice, and I'm here representing a group of 51 families together with some other, you know, homeowners. Join me later. First and foremost, I want to premise that we are here because we're sent by the planning department to actually start the process to go to a proper venue, I would say. So as you may be aware, there is currently a large, large development and a lot of works happening on Marine Avenue by the substation of Edison, right? And they basically, in the last several weeks, they removed dozens of trees and, you know, pretty much right now, the community of residents is facing, you know, the ugliness, I say, of the substation. During the process, we realized that basically, as far as the zoning code, you currently have in the city of Hawthorne, some specific regulations for buildings with more than four units with parking lots and also separate set of rules for car dealerships, okay, which implies that there is certainly a certain level of awareness on how landscape has an impact in embellishing the community. And so we realize that there is no set of rules dedicated to substations that actually have definitely among the worst negative impacts as far as, you know, the looks they have an impact in the community, right? So basically, I'm here today to request you guys to consider, okay, the creation of a specific set of rules and to be added to the zoning code that addresses the negative impact that the electric substation has to the community and specifically to adjacent residences that in this case are literally several feet sometimes only from the power lines. Thank you very much.
You could fill out a document right there for, so that we could connect with you.
All right. Thank you.
Next person, please. Sir, go ahead.
Hello, Mayor, Council. I was here a couple, maybe the last meeting, about park concerns, matters, parking safety coming out my driveway for me and my tenants. You delegated the issue to, I believe, the chief. The chief, we spoke, you told me to send you an email. I sent you an email with no response. However, the lieutenant, I believe he's watching remotely. I was able to see him when he came to my house. I was getting off work. Coincidentally, he and I spoke. He took the time to walk to the corner where there's been one tragedy of death already on the corner of 118th and Turo, where I reside. He took the time to walk to the corner with me. I showed him the problem. At three, four, five different times in the morning when you getting out, you can't see. The red right there has to be pushed back, and I'm sure it's probably on every corner, but I'm speaking for my corner. I'm also speaking for me and the tenants in my building. When we come out my driveway, the car is parked here, you can't see. I know it may not be a concern of yours, but I don't want to be up here another catastrophe, another disaster happening before something hap, before you can fix the problem. You delegated. I spoke with this, I tried to speak with this gentleman, Norris, numerous occasions, all the way back to Halloween. No avail. I sent, I put the little tickets, the complaints in a box. I can't speak with nobody. I don't know what it's going to take for you to send somebody out there to look at the matter. Last but not least, the lieutenant, who's watching remotely, agreed with me that I do have a safety concern and it's a legitimate right. So I don't know what else to do. I pay taxes here, I buy buildings here, I work here, I support the community. It's a legitimate beef. Take a look at it. Thank you.
Next individual, please.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Lisa Scott, and I also live in Marine Village. I've been a homeowner there for over 20 years, and I, my unit directly faces the Edison Substation. And recently, they did remove all of the trees, and they're, I imagine they're going to be doing some re-landscaping, but I respectfully request that we at least can see Edison's plans, see what their plans are, what the scope of the work is, how long it's going to take. I don't know if any of you have driven up Marine Avenue, but it's, it looks like a war zone particularly, and I'm just a little bit concerned. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Sir?
Hello, everybody. I'm Jason Harris, representing LA County Drones. I am a resident here in Hawthorne, and I just want to put a name to a face for the video they're about to show shortly. Just want to let everyone know that I've been a photographer for over 15 years, and I took it to the next level with aerial photography, and I think it's really nice. I like to show my creativity in this way. I have a private, I have a pilot's license for flying drones, so safety is, we have that in check. And so whenever we get the video up, I want everybody to take a look at it. If you need some aerial photography, LA County Drones, we can take care of you.
Do you have someone else? Thank you.
Was, what was the name of the video? Video? I found one, but... Okay.
Through the chair. For clarification, this is an extension from the presentation from the clerk's office. Okay.
You may want to close the oral communication first, then.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? So you're going to need to load that up, and we have somebody else. Okay, let's pause that. Okay. Next person?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, neighbors. I have a couple of announcements that I'm really excited about in terms of veteran issues right now. Many of you have heard all the controversy over the years about the veteran homeless problem in this area and Los Angeles being named as basically the veteran homeless, you know, capital of the nation. Today, the first building of the new developments up at West LAVA Medical Center, there was the ribbon cutting ceremony, and about 50 plus, 62 and older formerly homeless veterans are moving into that building. There will be a tremendous amount of coverage that will be on the news media tonight. I really invite you guys to take a look at it. The chief of staff for the secretary of the VA cabinet member came out to do the ribbon cutting. I went through the building this morning. It is glorious, and this is the first of what will end up being a total of about 1,800 units of permanent supported housing. This project has been in the work for years. We've been very involved in it, and we are incredibly proud that we're going to be taking such a major step, so please watch the news tonight. So that's one thing. And then two other things, very briefly. I've mentioned to you in the past that each of the five supervisory districts, the county supervisors' districts, have representatives on a military and veterans affairs commission. Part of what they have done is they've initiated something called the VPAN, Veteran Peer Access Network. The supervisory district that we're in, the second, opened their VPAN office a year or so ago in Compton, and they have relocated, and they have chosen to relocate in the city of Hawthorne. So they are having their opening event this Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and it is at the building at 5155 Rosecrans. So that's the building on the north side of Rosecrans Avenue, immediately east of the 405 entryway. It'll be on the first floor. Any veterans who need services, any family members who have questions or anything like that, please do come. There will be a lot of information given. The next thing is that a week from Saturday, so that will be on Saturday, March 11th, there will be a veteran support summit that is being held, and it's being held by a number of agencies, but it's being hosted at the Hawthorne VFW Post 2075, and that's at 4563 West 131st Street in Hawthorne. And that will be on Saturday, March 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There will be a lot of networking and a lot of information there as well. So anyone in the community who has interest in those things, please attend those two events. My last thing, very briefly, is on item number 11 tonight, on the proposed changes to the commissions. I have a couple of questions since I don't speak legalese, so I want to know if the changes are retroactive, and I also wanted to note that there seems to be no requirements for the people on the various commissions that are applying to have subject matter expertise in the areas of the commissions that they are applying for.
Sorry, ma'am, your time is up.
Sir, just finish real quick?
Yep, real quick. And the last thing that I want to know, there's some indication in the new ordinance pertaining to the chairs and co-chairs. I want to know if the current chairs and co-chairs are, second chairs, whatever, are going to continue their term now until January 1st of 2024, or whether the commissions are to have elections at next meetings, in which case the new chair and second chair, vice chair would only be in office the remainder of 2023, and then new terms would start for the new chairs in January of 2024. So I think there's some things in this ordinance that are not clear, and I have some severe hesitation about it and would very much like some clarity. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the city council? If not, I declare oral communications closed order. Can you present the video, please? Thank you for sharing. Great event. Was happy to be there as well. Enjoyed seeing everybody's happy faces when they received the food that was donated by the donors and distributed by the volunteer, many volunteers. So thank you, Mr. City Clerk. All right.
Let me just, real quick, say, LA County Drones, that's amazing. Amazing. Kudos to you, sir.
Really great job. Really, really, looked really nice. Crystal clear from up there. I wouldn't imagine that we could get a good resolution up there, from up there, so thank you. Okay. So... All right. So we have an agenda items, but I'm going to go over something for the, reestablish something, and this is something that I had discussed at the beginning of last meeting. We have municipal code that dictates the limit of presentations on the agenda, that limits the limits of proclamations on the agenda to a total of five per council meeting. And we also have a limit on two directives from council members. I had repeated with 2.06, 1.13, the agenda items, code from the municipal code says, and this is not myself dictating, this is municipal code that needs to be abided by. And unfortunately, at the last meeting, we had council members exceeding that, five, six, seven. Okay? So if we say we're supporting the staff and letting them do their job, this specific municipal code is intended for that. And the majority of my council member colleagues abided by that at the last meeting and have been abiding by that, but we need to bring this back and mention it again so that we are very conscious of that. So, Mr. City Manager, you're to abide by this municipal code. Two directives from each council member max, okay? You need to abide by this code. Okay? This protects you in case anybody wants to make a big deal that you're not getting certain things done. We have a code, we have a code to abide by. Okay? So be mindful, City Council. If we support our staff, we want to make sure that they're able to keep up with their regular duties. Okay? So, City Clerk, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I have five items on the consent calendar. They are items four through eight for your consideration and approval. Item four, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item five, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for February 28, 2023. Item six, approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting of January 10, 2023, and January 24, 2023. Item seven, resolution number 8393, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, making express findings and determinations that modifications to the 2022 California Building Standards Code are reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. Item eight, resolution number 8394, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California... proclaiming March 2023 as Women's History Month for adoption.
I move.
Second. Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. So let's take a look real quick. We have the bid opening. Madam Clerk, item nine.
Now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for Hawthorne Housing Maintenance, 2023 Rehabilitation of City-Owned Properties Hawthorne, California, City Project Number 22-06. There were two bids received. Only concrete construction was won accompanied by a bidder, by a bidder's bond. The prices are as follows. Concrete Construction, $13,246,239. Alliance Facility Services Incorporated, $11,93983.
I'll make a motion and I request that, that's correct, right? Request that.
Accept them.
Yeah, I, I want to go ahead and make a motion and the motion that the bids be referred to staff for study and recommendation. I could get a second.
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Manning.
Thank you.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Okay. Take a look. We have a public hearing on item 10. Go ahead.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing and approval of ordinance number 2239, adopting by reference the 2022 additions of the California Building Code, the California Residential Code, the California Electrical Code, the California Plumbing Code, the California Mechanical Code, the California Existing Building Code, the California Green Building Standards Code, the California Energy Code, the California Administrative Code, and the California Historical Building Code, repealing and reenacting chapters 1504, 1505, 1507, 1508, 1513, 1524, 1528, 1530, 1532, 1536, and 1540, and repealing local amendments 1512 and 1546, as well as all prior additions of the California Building Code previously adopted by the City Council, including but not limited to the Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, which is covered within the California Existing Building Code. No written communications were received.
Okay. Are there any communications, anybody wishing to speak on this item, please? Form a line. Okay, if not, I declare oral communications on this public hearing closed order. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance into the record, please?
Ordinance Number 2239, second reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, adopting by reference the 2022 additions of the California Building Code, the California Residential Code, the California Electrical Code, the California Plumbing Code, the California Mechanical Code, the California Existing Buildings Code, the California Green Building Standards Code, the California Energy Code, the California Administrative Code, and the California Historical Building Code, repealing and reenacting chapters 1504, 1505, 1507, 1508, 1513, 1524, 1528, 1530, 1532, 1536, and 1540, and repealing local amendments 1512 and 1546, as well as all prior additions of the California Building Code previously adopted by the City Council, including but not limited to the Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, which is covered within the California Existing Building Code for adoption.
I'll move.
Second. Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Okay. Next, we have ordinance, in ordinance, which is item 11, 2238. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance Number 2238, first reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, repealing Chapter 214 Beautification Commission, amending sections 2.17.040 Terms of Office and 2.17.050 Organization of Chapters 217 Youth Commission, adding sections 2.18.040 Terms of Office and amending sections 2.18.070 Chairperson of Chapter 2.18. Civil Service Commission, amending sections 2.19.020 Members and 2.19.030 Organization of Chapters 2.19. Veterans Affairs Commission, amending sections 2.20.040 Terms of Office and 2.20.050, I'm sorry, Organization of Chapters 2.20 Senior Citizens Commission, amending sections 2.22.040 Terms of Office and 2.22.050 Organization of Chapters 2.22. Park Recreation and Fine Arts Commission, amending sections 2.28.050 Chairperson and adding section 2.28090 Terms of Office to Chapters 2.28 Planning Commission of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and making a finding of exemption and compliance with CEQA in connection with, therewith for introduction.
I'll introduce.
To the Chair, I'm just curious for, for this particular thing. The Commissioner mentioned she didn't understand some of it. And I just wonder, can we clarify some of the things to the, all the commissions?
This is introduction of the ordinance for the first reading. So at the second reading is when we can fully discuss and address any questions that the council may have. If, if a Commissioner has a current Commissioner's specific questions, I could talk to her on the side.
Thank you.
So a discussion on this item would be best at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just introduced today, then you can discuss before adoption.
Making adjustments or whatever, et cetera. Okay, thank you. Next, we have general matters. Madam Clerk, item 12.
Now is the time and place to declare received sealed request for proposals for the City of Hawthorne Bridge Housing Site Operator. One proposal was received from Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse. Staff recommends that City Council accept the proposal for recommendation and study.
To the Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, can we look at that proposal, since there's only one? I understand it's an RFP and ultimately they're, they're the selection. However, how can the council look at that proposal? If you'd like, you want to bring it back in a legal confidential or? Okay.
You don't have that information now? It would lead to researcher, right?
That's okay.
It could also be that there's a limited amount of operators. And maybe there's not too many that would.
They would have been listed just like any bid list.
Yeah, I don't think there's that many.
Yeah.
That's what it kind of tells us, I think.
I'll get with you, City Attorney. Thank you.
Okay, if you have additional resources, anybody here on council, just kind of, let, may, have them be aware that we're looking for somebody. Sir?
So we could bring the matter back, but basically it's a general matter. It's not really asking for an action on this. It's just to.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to, to drag this out. I have no, no problems voting for this. I, I just want to see what the proposal looks like, right?
Okay, that should have been submitted with the package.
Okay, that's actually a valid. That's valid, absolutely.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Two. With three.
Or to what?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Did they already, did they read it already? You two, did you read it? Okay.
Okay, so same thing.
So I make a motion.
Second. Please vote. Okay, we can still discuss this later.
The vote reflects Mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, item 13, please.
Now is the time and place to declare received sealed request for proposals for the City of Hawthorne Bridge Housing Site Security. Proposals were received from Paragon Protection Services, City Guard Security Consulting Group, Eagle Eye Protection, Classic Protection Incorporated, City Security and Patrol Incorporated, and Cornerstone Protective Services. Staff recommends that the City Council accept proposals for recommendation and study.
I'll move.
Second.
Mr., Mr. City Manager, so this is the securities for which site now? The?
Bridge of Hope Housing, Tiny Homes.
Okay, the tiny homes, not the, not the veterans housing. Okay, good. Please vote.
The voting reflects Mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay.
Okay, good. Item 14, please.
American Rescue Plan Act, A R P A, update and request for approval of recommendations. Staff recommends that the City Council ask questions as necessary and provide direction and approval on the American Rescue Plan Act recommendations.
Is that going to be done tonight?
Yes, we have a representative from HDL that has a presentation.
So do you want, do you want us to go ahead and make a motion on 14 so that we could then see the presentation? Is that what?
We'd, we'd accept it after he presents it.
Okay.
If it's not to our, we don't have to accept it if it's.
Okay.
But we usually do, right? Okay. Let's, uh, have an efficient presentation, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Ken Duran. I represent HDL Companies. Excuse me. We are a consultant that has been retained by the city to assist you in the, making recommendations for the use of your ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. The City Council, back in July of 2021, approved the first round of funding. So the city's allocation was based upon a formula from the federal government and your full allocation was $30 million. And that was actually allocated to the city in two different, what we call tranches. The first was in July of 2021 and the second was in July of 2022. And in July of 2021, the City Council reviewed recommendations from your staff on how that first tranche of funding would be allocated. It is important to note that there are two very important deadlines in the use of these funds. The first is that the funds must be designated by December 31st, 2024, and spent by 20, by December 31st, 2026. So the next slide is your, what the City Council had previously approved as far as the allocation of those funds. There was $11,445,000 that was available in what was called, what's referred to as loss revenue, which is money that can be used in your general fund for general fund purposes. At the time, the City Council only allocated $2,780,010 and the various categories of allocation are identified in the slide presentation and your staff report. So that was action that the council had already taken in July of 2021. Some of those funds have been completely spent, some of them partially spent, and then others are still pending expenditures. So there is additional funding that was available for that first loss revenue that can be used for your general fund. That remaining amount is $8.6 million. So this next slide indicates the recommendation from staff as far as how that additional $8,665,610 would be, is recommended to be spent on general fund expenditures. And those expenditures are outlined in the slide, going to fire contract services, salaries for police, salaries for your public works department, and community service salaries. It's important to note that the salary offsets are for departments that were directly impacted by the pandemic and those departments provide direct services during that time period. Then there's also expenditures for community service, I mean, for emergency medical clinician, intergov, virtual city hall, communication upgrades, virtual electronic document migration, and virtual desktop interference. So, interface. So those are the recommendations from your staff for the use of those additional loss revenues. In addition, during the first, so for the second, or excuse me. So in addition to the loss revenue funds, there were some specific programs that the City Council approved, again, back in July 2021 for specific programs. That would be for the telehealth van services, homeless pallet shelters, health and wellness events, a tablet program, and $1 million for several business recovery assistance programs. And so I would like to, the next slide kind of indicates what those business assistance programs were. And I won't go through them in detail because I think the council has had previous presentations on the various business assistance programs. But the one that we want to highlight this evening is the first program that we've been working with your staff on implementation is the citywide shop local e-gift card program. We've been working for a number of months to register businesses for that program. And in your December of last year's meeting, you actually entered into an agreement with the web to provide outreach assistance to sign up businesses for that program. We're happy to report that that program is launching tomorrow morning. So tomorrow morning, your residents can begin to purchase gift cards. And if you recall, the way the program works is that the residents can purchase gift cards at $25 increments. And for their purchase, they will receive a free gift card from, that is funded by the city out of these funds for an additional $25 gift card. So there are currently are 14 businesses that are enrolled in that program. And so the residents who purchase the card can use those cards and the bonus gift cards at any one of those 14 businesses. And when they buy their cards, there's a list of businesses that they can utilize. Our experience with some of our other clients is that once these programs are launched and people start to use them, that the business community starts to gain some traction and you'll be getting additional businesses who will want to be part of that program. So we're very excited about the opportunity for this program to roll out. And so there's information on your city's website. So if residents want to know how to purchase gift cards, they can go to that website and it has a direct link to the YFTI, which is the purveyor of the cards, to their website and it'll walk them through how the program works and how they can purchase the cards. The other business assistance programs that have been identified are also underway as far as the development of those programs. So we've been generating interest lists from some of your businesses and we have about 25 businesses that have indicated that they are interested in finding out more information about one or more of these additional business assistance programs. And we'll be finalizing the details of those programs and ruling those out very soon also. So the second tranche, the additional $15 million, is available now for the City Council's consideration for a number of projects. Your city staff has put together a list of those projects and our company, HDL, has been working with them on verifying their eligibility for use of these funds. So we'll just kind of quickly walk through what those projects are and then if you have questions after the presentation, your, your staff can provide you with more additional information. So the first one is another general fund revenue recovery and available for that program is $7.3 million. There's a project for improvements to the water tower. It's a, the water tower, it's a seismic retrofit project that would use funds for a project that would assist in retrofitting that project for seismic security. There's a project for a sewer system program that would provide upgrades to a large section of your sewer system within your community. There is a project to provide additional heating and air conditioning and upgrades to two of your facilities, Memorial Center and the City Hall Basement. And there's a project for providing homeless, or employment opportunities and assistance for the unhoused, entering into an agreement with the South Bay Workforce Investment Board to provide training and for employment opportunities for unhoused individuals in your community. There is a project for the school district enhancements. School districts are not a recipient of these funds, but they can use these funds in similar ways that the city can. So they presented a number of projects specifically in HVAC upgrades for some of their facilities, as well as providing protective equipment for some of their employees and testing for their employees. There's a program for a urgent care facility opportunity. There is not an urgent care facility in the community. There is not an urgent care facility in the community, so there um is a great need to provide that service to the residents of your community. So the proposal is to use some of your ARPA funds to provide assistance to encourage a urgent care facility or multiple urgent care facilities to relocate into your community. Um, staff feels that this is a very high priority project because there is a under, underserved population in your community who could utilize that service. So this would be an opportunity to use these ARPA funds to hopefully uh encourage and offset maybe some relocation costs for a business to relocate into your community. And then there's also a landlord rental assistance program uh which would provide relief for landlords whose tenants have been in arrears um because of the pandemic, and it would actually allow some of those tenants to um catch up on some of their rent that they're in arrears for, and the landlord would benefit from that by um hopefully having some of their tenants catch up on some of the lost revenue. There's also a program for tablets for um city council commissioners and staff to help facilitate relo, um remote meetings um um that you may still continue to have from time to time because of the pandemic. So that's a list of all of the projects that are being recommended by your staff for use of the funds. So at this point, I can uh attempt to answer any questions that you might have, and also um your staff is available to answer any specific technical questions you might have for any of the specific projects that we presented.
Okay, uh Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the presentation. There are a couple of questions. Uh, you made mention that the funds need to be used by or before uh twenty twenty-six.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Showing all the slides that you have uh just shown us and with the dollar amount, can you give us um a roundabout or estimate of what funds have already been depleted in any of those programs, if any at all? Um, there are recommendations for some things that um obviously are first time, I, from what I remember, I don't remember an urgent care facility. I don't know if that's new.
Yes.
But um, you know, I know we have Providence Little Company of Mary across the street. I know we have another clinic on a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and thirty-fifth Street. That's a clinic that I've used and my family have used. It's fifty, only fifty dollars. It's free. You only pay fifty dollars. You go in and see whatever physician you need to see with x-rays and things like this. It's my hope that if that money is there, and in fact that there is a sense of needing more urgent care facilities and uh addressing health concerns, uh you know, at a broad spectrum, that maybe we partner with some of these uh clinics that are already existing in our city. So there could be, you know, a cohesive uh partnerships of sorts, and they could um, you know, uh project that out to their communities, surrounding uh health uh areas, spas, if you would. Um, I would love to see that. I, I, I like the fact that we're addressing the landlord assistant uh program, um especially for those owners. I think that's important. And those were just kind of one of the, the ones that really um kind of uh grabbed my, my eyes. Um, but definitely the first year, if I remember when we first initially had this money, which was quite surprising and shock to us at thirty million, um, we immediately addressed the homeless issues. We immediately addressed the health, uh mental health issues, the behavior health issues. And so I'm really um excited about the first um slide that shows um those types of services, especially for the community to know how we're assisting those in need. So that, that's very important. I like the fact that um the, the web stepped up and is helping us and is also gonna be addressing some things that the mayor had made mention, which is um jobs in assisting the homeless in looking for work, um and helping assist them in any way possible. And so that's important. Um, our schools are important to us. Our teachers are important to us, and so I like the fact that we also implemented um a school component to it. A sense of sharing our wealth, right? Because at the end of the day, we are a community. We do serve the people at large and families, and so I like everything here. That's just, the only one thing I would um want to see is uh um how quickly are we already depleted the, the monies for some of these services? If there could be another uh presentation or a chart showing us, you know, done, finished, uh that amount's already gone, no longer available, and then go, go from there, how much is left so that we could start going down to twenty twenty-six, knowing that we're coming up on that? But if we could, we could have something like that, um, I think that would be more visual for us to, to see what we are working with.
Yeah, I think we can, um, I do have some numbers here. I just, I, I didn't want to belabor the point as far as how much has already been spent. But I think the important thing uh for you is that last slide that you referenced that had those new projects. Those have not been um approved yet by the council. So those are the projects that the staff is looking for, your uh direction this evening. So no funds have been expended for any of those projects. Those would be new projects that, that uh would be looked at if they're approved by the council. The other projects that uh we had in the previous slides, um as far as the revenue loss, some of the um, the telehealth um uh outreach programs, the, the homeless pallet program, those programs are already um in place, and funds have been uh expended. I don't believe any of the funds have been fully expended for any of those programs, but those programs are currently in place. And as I mentioned, the business assistance programs are ones that we're launching now.
One last question. So for monies that, say for instance, um are not, are not used, can we reallocate that as in, in the next couple of years? If, if, say for instance, um uh micro-business, small business, say we have a, a, a big dollar amount to assist uh businesses, a hundred and fifty thousand, hypothetically speaking, say only a portion of that is left, a, a minimal portion.
Right.
Can that be reload, reallocated somewhere else, or do we have to use it for searching out additional micro businesses and businesses in general?
No, you, these programs are ones that you are um authorizing. As long as the pro, the program that you're reallocating those funds to is an eligible expense under ARPA. You can reallocate those funds. So for example, you know, we have the million dollars in business assistance programs, and let's say that, you know, that money doesn't get spent. Uh, you can reallocate that to another project, but the caveat is those deadlines still apply.
Sure.
So you still, so let's say a year from now, um, or six months from now, you want to reallocate uh those funds, or there's a, one of these capital projects that um um doesn't use all the funds that you've allocated, you can reallocate that to another project at any time before the expiration of that twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-six dates.
I'm sure we're gonna be seeing you back again.
I think so. This is very fluid.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna go to my colleagues, but I wanted to just piggyback, that's exactly what I was going to ask. So um, we have staff constantly looking at all the projects that we've already uh approved, and so my concern was that, you know, are we gonna get stuck? But, so we have these deadlines to meet, is what you're saying. So um, I know we have a new member to our council, and uh we have an opportunity of another set of projects that we're going to approve. I think you guys have thought them out pretty well, but I guess uh um for this next round, uh, we're gonna have our new councilwoman who's gonna be able to participate that, and we're not fixed on those. Uh, there's still room to readjust, but those are based on feedback from staff. Yourself, our city manager, what was, where, who were the groups that put those together again?
Maybe I can defer to staff on how that, but I, it was city staff who, who uh put together the projects, and our role as the consultant was to um take a look at them and verify whether they are eligible use of ARPA funding. But I can call on the city manager.
Absolutely, I can explain what's going on. Uh, we have, is it bi-weekly or weekly meetings? They come so fast.
Uh, weekly.
We have weekly meetings with H D L, uh myself, housing director, finance director, public works director, and we talk about needs from the city. We uh review the directives that are given during the council meeting, uh things that we've heard from different departments and needs in the community, and that's how we formal, formalize the list of needs.
And i, and the reason I'm asking that is, uh, I guess, uh, now that we are going, we're seeing the results of uh the, the money that's been allocated to those programs, seeing the results, and uh there could be new uh uses that might originate from the council, um things that you might have not thought about, or, or in the previous time that we interacted with you, we might have not presented them and uh issued them as uh possible projects that we could work on. So I think uh, I just invite my council colleagues to uh start um diving deep into these projects that are already out there and see if they're uh, see if they're agree with you, if you agree with them, and uh if we could just kind of change things around. I'm not saying we have to, but um my perspective, a couple of months ago, might be a little bit different based on certain things that I've seen that might have an application. Go ahead, you want to say, go ahead? Well, actually, we're gonna go uh to Councilmember Montero, Councilmember Patterson, and uh our councilwoman wants to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
Thank you for your presentation. Quick question about the gift card, right? Because I, my understanding is that a recipient can go up to three hundred dollars, correct? So they can add a twenty-five card, another twenty-five, up to three hundred dollars, correct?
No, they can purchase, they can purchase gift cards up to three hundred dollars, but they only receive a, a one twenty-five dollar gift card.
Only one twenty-five.
Yeah, as far as this program. So you have a million, or you have a twenty-five thousand dollars allocated to this. So theoretically, you could provide a, a thousand twenty-five dollar gift cards to residents. But they can purchase gift cards up to a higher amount, but they only get the one twenty-five dollar card.
One twenty-five, okay. Just clarify, get this.
Yeah, there was some confusion, I think.
Question, yes.
A question.
Now, let me ask you, um, this is gonna be like a, a controversial question, but I'm all in favor about schools, but all the school district receive almost half of funds too, like federal dollar through, because of COVID. They receive millions of dollar, all the school districts, uh for the same thing that you said, the retrofit stuff, condition, classroom reset. So the fact that Hawthorne, we have five school districts, and we allocate two hundred and forty thousand dollar, I wanna understand exactly how we're going to distribute this money. And why did we put the school? Because I know the schools receive millions and millions of dollar from federal government because of the COVID.
Good evening, City Council. Kimberly Mack, Director of Housing. Um, so we selected to include the schools because um we do hear a lot that the schools are deficient in funding, deficient in resources, and we wanted to help them also provide funding back to their general funds to provide for other programs or things they needed for um their children. And so we decided that it would be a good use of funding to include the schools. We met with the school districts and we had conversations with them. We asked them to provide us with a list of items that they needed assistance with, and based on that, that's how we determined the two hundred and forty thousand that we came up with to present to you tonight.
The school districts.
All right.
The school districts.
Uh, we went with the Hawthorne School District, Wiseborne School District, and Sentinel Valley.
All right. All right, so they, 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 they have the need there?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
They have a greater need than what we were able to put on our sheet, actually.
Okay, that, that, that satisfies my, my, thank you.
Can you ask what types?
I'm not finishing.
Yeah, let, let me finish with the soul questions, we'll go back.
I was gonna say, what are the needs? I wanted to know what they were.
Continue.
The urgent care facility, right? So is that a hundred thousand, is to encourage a, a new facility to be open? Or you in contact to, with the existing clinics in Hawthorne to expand?
Correct. It was to encourage new facilities to enter into Hawthorne, um to provide the services to residents so that Hawthorne residents don't have to go outside of the area to seek assistance.
Well, I, I would say for you to increase that by four hundred thousand. Give them a half a million dollar because a hundred thousand, it doesn't fit one, two nails for the, because I have built two school-based clinic, and I know how much money they cost. So that's not enough money for, for anybody to be, feel encouraged, to feel excited to come. A hundred thousand dollar could be the, the, the CP, C P O P permits, you know, the uh condition use permit, that, that money could be gone. So I would say if there is any money there to give somebody real think about coming, I would say put half a million dollar in there.
Do we, do we have concurrence on that? Because we, we were talking about all this, this is important, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. We're gonna.
I'm done.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Pat, uh Patterson, and then we'll go, and then we'll just address any things after that, please.
Uh, far as Mr. Montero's recommendation of half a million, I would defer to staff um on that, you know, to the experts to let us know, you know, what makes the most amount of sense. Uh, I, I, I have a question that's similar to uh Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, I got the impression based upon this report that we, we had a little over thirty, maybe thirty-two million dollars uh allocated to us from ARPA funds. We've already identified the use of about fifteen million, is that, is that about accurate? And then so theoretically, if we say, hey, let's go with all the things in this proposal, we would have enough money to do everything that's on the sheet. Is that?
Yes.
Generally correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to get, get clarity on that. Uh, I, you know, I, I'm in a position where, you know, I trust uh our city staff, I think we have some of the best staff in, in uh the South Bay, so, you know, whatever you guys uh think is, is best for our community, um, you know, I definitely support it. I would like to ask to consider a couple of things, though. Uh, one was, uh, I had some residents reach out to me on social media, asking for some support for rent. Uh, there's been a number of residents has, have experienced some uh rent increases that they may not be comfortable with, or, you know, they can't really handle comfortably, might have been a better way of, of saying it. And so I don't know if it's possible to create maybe a rental assistance program for our residents who have experienced some rent increases recently that, that maybe put them in a, in a tough position, maybe kind of help um a little bit. I don't know what that would look like, but just, you know, suggestion that, that came from our, our residents. Um, and also, um, you know, if, if the staff thought it made sense, if there's money for it, I also thought it might be a good idea to revisit um the um, what was it, the, the hazard pay bonuses that we had uh paid out to our employees um previously, and maybe do another round of those.
I'd just like to add to that, to keep in mind that the projects have to be COVID response, um, so rent increases aren't necessarily um COVID response programs, so we would take a look at it for sure to see if there's any angle we could use to assist the residents, um, which is why we kind of geared it towards the landlords at this time, because the landlords have suffered, because there has already been an emergency rental assistance program for Hawthorne residents, and it just hasn't been enough to, to help the landlords out. So that's, that's why our focus was for landlords this time.
I think that's spectacular, that, that, that that's included. I, I support everything that's on that sheet. So just some ideas that was thrown out. Uh, I mean, some for you guys to consider, not a directive, not a, you know, whatever. Just let us know, and i, if we have to dig it maybe to, into our general fund for something to support um our residents with rent increases, you know, maybe if that's, we have the money for that, something to look into also.
You will, thank you.
Ma'am, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Please forgive me, I have my tooth pulled, so I'm in a lot of pain, but um I'm definitely interested in supporting uh the urgent care. Um, we have residents of ninety thousand, and even the urgent cares that we have is not sufficient enough to cover um all of the people, and especially during COVID, uh we have a lot of people experiencing trauma and mental health. Um, and a lot of people did have the ability um to go to the doctor during COVID, and so now you see uh influx of people getting um health support now, and so um a lot of doctors are just bombarded for small things, because people are now starting to go uh to the doctor. So I think um having more urgent care facilities uh would benefit our residents, and then also you just don't want to wear out the ones um that we currently have, because it's probably so many people going to those. So um I concur with uh Alex Montero when he said that if we can allocate maybe more money based on the research that the staff does, um to allocate more money to that. And also in terms of the kids, I've been to those classrooms, and those teachers are struggling uh with providing supplies for their uh students, and so having that money go to them, I think is important as well. So I'm definitely in favor of figuring out how we can bring more uh urgent cares to our city um to support our residents.
Thank you. All right. So actually, it's, it's good that, I think that it's good that we started talking about this, because these are the types of ideas I think that you've had in the back of your head, that you've been thinking about uh with, when it comes to the ARPA funding. So I think that the tenant-based rental assistance program that was mentioned is a good idea. I would argue that um uh the high rents now are directly related to this whole COVID thing uh situation. We have a lot of uh, a lot of uh landowners who have, like, I would like venture and say that they've taken advantage of the situation to raise the funds, arguing that maybe, you know, it's, you know, some people have taken advantage and not pay the rent, and so they argue that they need to recoup. So they make excuses to uh increase the rents. I know there's. I know there's people out here that might not be happy with those comments, but I think, uh, there's, we need to approach that very carefully, and, uh, we can make a justification that, uh, this, these high increasing rents are further legacy. I mean, food prices are going up, services are going up. Do we really have a supply chain management, supply plane, supply, uh, chain management issue? Neighboring countries don't have this. So I think it's a, people are taking advantage of the situation in increasing prices, rents, and a lot of stuff. Um, so, yeah, staff, if you guys could look at that. And then the other thing is the school, absolutely. I, I support, uh, increasing the, uh, the amount that we allocate to the schools. But I think we need to be careful. The only school district that we mentioned, Hawthorne School District, is the only one that's encompassed fully in the city of Hawthorne and fully services res, uh, students living here within the city of Hawthorne. It uses, uh, tax money from the property tax money and other taxes to fund it. 100% Hawthorne residents. Sentinel has only one out of the three schools or that are, are centered here in the city of Hawthorne, serve about one-third of its population, uh, student population. Wiseburn, oh, a fraction, a fraction of their students live in the city of Hawthorne, in the Holly Glen area. We have students living in Del Air and Wiseburn. Those are county areas. And their property tax base is outside of the city of Hawthorne mostly because the, the, uh, Wiseburn School District's property tax base extends into the industrial business area of the city of Inglewood. Okay? So I don't, I don't, in my honest opinion, I don't think we can assume, uh, funding those, uh, school districts that only have a fraction of their students that are, uh, from the city of Hawthorne and tax base, as I mentioned. So I think we need to be fair about it. And just, uh, I would like to ask the city's staff, if you guys are okay with that, just to kind of look and see what kind of, uh, calculation we could use to just make it fair and take that into consideration. Sure, increase the amount of money that we're gonna put into this area, but, um, we just need to take, you know, we just need to look at that.
Mayor Vargas, I'm not sure there was a request to raise funds for the school district. I, I understood.
About the school, yeah, school programs.
The clinic.
What?
The clinics, clinics in particular, right?
We asked about the clinic.
Urgent care.
Urgent care, yeah, in particular, that's a direct response.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, those are two different things, just to clarify. The urgent cares for medical needs for the Hawthorne residents and the school districts are separate. The request was to increase the funding to the urgent care, the medical assistance for Hawthorne residents, not to the school district.
Uh, which one are we talking about?
You're correct, Ms. Kimberly.
Correct.
Yeah, so, yeah, the school district programs, of course. Increasing that.
So your proposal is to request the school districts?
Yeah, the school district programs, absolutely. But just making sure that if we're gonna be distributing money to the different school district programs, to the school district programs that it's allocated on, on a certain calculations. Yeah, and we're not gonna assume their debt or their, you know, correct their, you know, help relieve their budget, but those programs, yes. Okay, we're good?
Can I, one more?
Okay, let's just, yeah, let's continue.
I'm gonna wrap it up, I'm gonna wrap it up. I know, I'm gonna wrap it up, Kimberly. I'm sorry. Um, I really want to make sure that our pellet shelter housing, that we've worked very hard on, um, has the monies for any, um, any challenges, uh, any, uh, unfor, un, you know, future things that we might need. Does that make sense? Say, so if we have 1.3, and we're building this out, and we come across some challenges that we weren't aware of, whether it be structure, whether it be ground, whether it be, you know, uh, piping, electricity, things like this out of the, you know, not knowing. If we could maybe reserve some of this ARPA money to assure that we have a reserve for these types of incidents. If we have something we need to pull from, we have that for the pellet shelter housing program. Okay? Anything that related to that.
Will do, we're looking to.
All right, so, uh, we have a motion, second, did we vote on it?
I make a motion, yeah.
It's been seconded? Anybody? Who seconded it? Yourself? Motion, uh, second, please. Please vote. To accept the report, thank you.
Thank you. And I, I'm assuming the, the request here, right?
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
And the, the good thing is that we could adjust as needed. Uh, we, we have, we think we're, uh, this, certain amounts of money are gonna be needed. But the good thing is if we could, uh, sir, if you could keep track of the spending, and it's, hey, guys, you know, I don't think we're gonna need that much. Um, I think you guys are, uh, should consider maybe moving some of it back because you're probably not gonna use all of it. So we don't want to waste any of that money, and there's programs out there. So that's your job, so you let us know.
Yeah, and, uh, as the city manager indicated, we meet with staff on a weekly basis and we track the, the progress of the program. So I think, uh, I think between staff and, and our firm, I think we've got a pretty good understanding of where we are with the expenditures.
And there's tons of things that I know that other cities have been doing, friends of ours in other cities. So there's so many, but, uh, we just prioritize them. Do you guys hope, thank you.
And thank you for the, to take us into this easy process.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Did you give a round of applause to staff for helping us out? This is.
And our consultant, yeah.
And we want to thank our federal government, Congresswoman Maxine Waters, to help facilitate that, so kudos to her, thank you to her. Excellent. Adam Fifteen?
Now is the time and place to declare received silk requests for proposals for consultant services for development and implementation, implementation of a relocation plan for rental rehabilitation project using federal home investment partnership funds. Proposals were received from Dell Richardson and Associates Incorporated and OPC. Staff recommends that city council accept proposals for recommended, for recommended study.
Motion?
To the chair.
The motion's been made, you could go ahead.
Uh, no, I'm not gonna make a motion. Um, city attorney, I want to, um, recuse myself from this item. Uh, it has a potential for, um, uh, conflict. Um, my employer, uh, is, it has a relationship with, uh, D E L, Dell Richardson and Associates. So I'd like to recuse myself from, um, participating in this item.
Okay.
Thank you.
For a brief minute? Can I get a second? We could call.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes. Uh, sorry, Katrina Manning voting no. And Angie Reyes English, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, recusing herself.
Okay. Councilwoman, can you hear us? Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, can you hear us, please? Come on back in.
That's for studying investigation, right? We're not approving that.
No, no. So there's, just.
Accepting it and giving the staff to make a decision.
And if there's any concerns from council, that's, uh, let's hear them because, uh, we want to make sure that we're making the right decision too. So we don't want to be, uh, blindsided on anything. Okay. Next, we have the city manager's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, can you please read 16 through 19?
Sure can. Item 16, sewer improvement project 2023, project number 23 dash 02, out to bid. Item 17, approval of a blanket purchase order to the Water Quality Control Board for waste discharging fees. Item 18, blanket purchase order for the Public Works Department for L Everett and Associates LLC. Item 19, amendment to contract approved May 25th, 2021, for administering the COVID-19 Relief and Economic Recovery Program. Mr. Mayor, that concludes city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 16 through 19?
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
I lost my place, where are we?
City manager, yeah, consent calendar, 16 through 19.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, so, uh, we have elected officials' reports, recommendations. We'll begin with the city attorney. Ma'am?
Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out, um, taking your time this evening to be here at the city council meeting. I want to say, uh, many blessings again to the De Leon family and what they're going through. Uh, on February 18th, um, I went to Councilwoman Katrina Manning's, uh, meet and greet over at Holly Park. So I would like to thank her and all the residents that came out. It was very nice to see Hawthorne PD out in such, uh, big numbers over there. And, you know, in conjunction with that, uh, it was also nice to see some of the police officers who I met at the management training. So it was nice to see them again and put names to faces again and, and see everyone come out again. Um, we were over at, um, on the 23rd at the Kanaka Grand reopening, so it was nice to see everyone there. And, you know, glad to see them, uh, with their reopening and the newly things done to the branch over there on Hawthorne. Um, I wanted to say thank you to the Hawthorne Chamber Conference. It was nice attending the Valentine's Day mixer, um, and speaking with everyone there. So thank you for the invite and such a great time.
That's it.
That's it? Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, Ms. City Clerk, go ahead.
Want to thank all who attended the program a little bit earlier for Monica, um, at the clerk's office. If you get a chance to, there's a lovely plaque outside. Uh, I, I invite all to come and check it out. Um, I also wanted to thank Kaneka. They had a wonderful program, um, re-grand opening, and it was really fabulous. Uh, I see some of the contest winners here, some of the raffle winners here. Uh, we had a really good time. And, and also, I wanted to thank, uh, Councilwoman Katrina Manning for, uh, getting us out in the community at Holly Park. It was really nice to meet with the residents and just have a open and candid conversation about our issues here in Hawthorne. And, uh, and also just to kind of let people get to know who we are and, and whatnot. Uh, again, want to thank everybody here for the Black History Month celebration as this is the close of Black History Month. Looking forward to some amazing things next year, and, and that's all I have. Thank you all so much for coming out.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, uh, thank you, residents, for coming to express your concern and give us some feedback, what's going on up there. Um, yeah, it was a great, you know, this month of February went too fast. Today's the last day of February. So the Black History Month, again, thank you, uh, Ms. Dana, for putting that together and for the videos, it was fantastic, thank you very much. Uh, yeah, we did attend the Chamber of Commerce mixer, um, the, uh, Ms. Katrina Manning meet and greet at Holly Park with Park Village and the Tradition Greens. So thank you for all the guys being there. Um, the Connected Credit Union was, uh, the reopen was fantastic, so thank you very much. Um, the, um, things that coming up, you know, just keep in mind that we're gonna have, uh, Earth Day and, uh, Easter Bunny Stravaganza on April 1st, so, for one month from tomorrow. Uh, we have the cleanup day, right, March 8th coming up? So keep, put those in, uh, in your calendar. Oh, March 18th, I thought it was 8th, okay, March 18th. So sorry, my bad. Um, one thing that probably I want, I want to give a directive on is for that, uh, to bring us the potential to put the speed hump on that Cranbrook, Cranbrook, uh, Avenue. Because there was another gentleman that, who came before him about months ago to talk about the same street. Uh, so I think, uh, maybe we need to come up with, to do something there. I appreciate that. And, and, and I think the other issue, since these, that, these other gentlemen have came twice about 18th Street and Truro, can we have like some type of, uh, um, what do you call it?
Memo?
Or give us, Agbor to give us some type of, uh, uh, what is the law? Because I think that red line have a specific lint, uh, that we cannot dictate. It is already dictated by the state, by, by the safety, uh, LA County Safety Regulation from the state. So maybe we need to give some public announcement here about that red line and also the, the nine feet of the white, uh, parking that we, the T-parking that we created. So maybe we need to explain to people, uh, about those because that gentleman seems come here twice already. So maybe we need to, Agbor to give us a little presentation, maybe five minutes about that, please. Um, again, you know, uh, COVID is coming to an end. Uh, California just declared, you know, as of today, there is no more emergency COVID-19. So LA County is gonna end all their protocols and mandate by March 31st. So keep your fingers crossed that we, we survived this pandemic after three years, right? So, um, and we're still here doing business for the city. And again, I want to thank, uh, the staff because you guys prepared all these reports for us, uh, especially, you know, the housing department, Kimberly, and, and Mr. Vaughn Norris, and the city attorney to give us all this good stuff for us to chew about it and make, and legislate about it and, and vote on it. Um, and the ARPA fund, it, thanks God, you know, I see the water tower there because I think that thing do need to be retrofitted just in case the land start shaking, right? Because we see what happened in Turkey and Syria, you know, about 50,000 people die and, uh, infrastructure collapse. So we have to make sure that our, our water is safe, right? They have drinking water when we need it. So thank you for tonight, and I'll see you guys in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, would you like to proceed?
Um, tonight, I'm going to pass on speaking because I'm just in so much pain, so.
Yeah. We wish you well, hope you get better soon, okay? Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Patterson, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like always, I want to thank the community for coming out and making voices heard. I want to thank the, our commissioners for being so, um, consistent on coming out to the council meetings and, and, um, and speaking, making voices heard. And again, I'd like to maybe suggest if we can organize some time for our commissioners to provide reports to the council if they wanted, if they want to do it. And if they want to do it, um, at a council meeting or, or submit something written, written form. But, you know, we wouldn't, you know, we need them for everything that we do, uh, out in our community. I want to thank staff for your hard work, um, coming in, uh, with, during the rain and the flooding and, you know, any time there's two drops of rain in LA, there's flooding. Um, and I appreciate the community for coming out and, and participating in the process. I know some of you guys have had long days at work and, um, you know, early mornings and, um, and are still committed to, to being here and, um, and participating in the process. I think that's spectacular. Uh, I, um, last week, few of our, our council members and our city manager had a visit over at, uh, city of Inglewood. Um, and I already mentioned that, only mention that because, you know, our council, I believe we're, we're all on the same page and wanting a lot of the same things in our community. Uh, you know, we want economic development, uh, we want business growth, uh, we want sit-down restaurants in our community. Of course, these are the things that our citizens say every day, uh, about what's important to them. You know, we want to beautify Hawthorne, and we want to have synergy with our, our neighboring cities, um, so we can all work together and, and, um, you know, and bring success all over the board. And, uh, def- definitely excited to be working with, um, the rest of the council, uh, under leadership, leadership of our mayor. And hopefully, together, we can, you know, bring some success, um, to our city and deliver on all the promises we make to our constituents. Um, you know, I, you know, live in the city. My, my daughter has a place in the city, and my daughter's mom has a place in the city. And, um, you know, my uncle's here in the city, and they have a lot of friends here in the city. And, and it's important to me that we, um, you know, that we make Hawthorne as beautiful and as successful as possible. And, you know, us council members, you know, we're part-time council members. You know, we have full-time jobs doing other things, at least some of us do. Um, others are, you know, I'm playing, I'm joking. Everybody, you know, has a career and, 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 and jobs and all that stuff. And, you know, we do our best to make the contribution the best way that we can. And, you know, it's nothing we, we can't do it all ourselves. We depend on our staff to, um, really do all the hard work. And we depend on the community to let us know what's important to you and help us to focus our efforts in the right direction. So I want to continue to, you know, thank you for, for communicating with us and making your voices heard. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, councilmember. So.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to mention that Jen Vogel sent you the annual report, so I personally delivered to your desk over there, okay?
Make sure, make, talk about it a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Pro Tem, or what did I call you earlier? Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor? Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah. Vice Mayor, everybody doesn't understand Mayor Pro Tem. Like, what is that, right? Thank you. So a couple of things. I had the Holly Park Little League reach out to me. Congratulations to all of our baseball Little Leaguers that the season has started. Look forward to bringing them to council sometime in March so that we can see who they are and how excited they are to be playing softball. That's one of my favorite sports, too. I participated with Coffee with a Cop, Hawthorne Police Department, at McDonald's on Rose Crowns. And as funny as it seems, I might have hit like three McDonald's until I got the right one right. Ain't that crazy? I mean, I was just, I didn't know where I was going, and I thought it was somewhere else and it ended up being someone else. But anyhow, Coffee with a Cop, and that's coming up also, Coffee with a Cop on March second, Thursday, March second, from ten to two PM at the Hawthorne Police Department and near the parking lot area, I believe. And there's going to be an opportunity, is it Axon? Is it Axon or Ixson? Exxon. It's a road show. They're going to be presenting, they're going to have a booth there so that you can see the types of technology and things, devices and things that they have for personal use. So if you're interested in that, I'm going to be participating because I want to buy a couple of things myself. So I look forward to that. The First Time Home Buyers Program through Faith, that's coming up on March twenty-fifth from nine to one PM at the South Bay Celebration Assembly Church. And I believe there's some council members here and on the dais that are going to be participating and engaging in that for First Time Home Buyers Program. And we have a First Time Home Buyers Program here in the city of Hawthorne also for those that are watching from home. I want to recognize Women's History Month coming up in March. Kudos and congratulations to all of our moms, our women, our strong women. I want to see how maybe council members here, myself, Katrina Manning, myself, maybe could do a luncheon with some of the women here in Hawthorne, including our city treasurer, our city clerk, and some of our women out there in the audience so that they could participate and just kind of like, you know, have tea and have some biscuits.
It's May sixth.
May sixth? Okay. I know you, I know you mentioned it, but, you know, maybe we could have two. The whole month of March is, March thirty-first, right? It's a long month, right? So look out for that.
March twenty-fifth is our first one.
Right. Okay, so we're going to look out for, we're going to send out some flyers on that, but thank you for reminding me on that. LA County drones, the footage was amazing. I can't say enough. That was awesome. I see drones all the time, and I know that's what they are. It's not an illusion. I know what they look like now. But that's just amazing to see the line of people around City Hall that was here for food distribution and participating on that Black History Month, that day in particular. So the Eighth Annual Business Expo is coming up. Look forward to that on April twenty-eighth. I know I heard the event at the VA Lodge on One Thirty-First Street on the eleventh of March. AYSO is going to be kicking off their soccer season as well. Let's see, what else is there? I want to just thank staff for the, from HDL, the consultant, and Kimberly, and all of those that have worked to bring us, Harpa recommendations. Look forward to that. More importantly, I'm glad that we have the money to do that because without the money, we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing today. So thank you for that. And then, let's see. There were some other things. I want to thank the gas company, the representative that came out. And I know since then, we've received some notices on some rebates and some grants that have been allocated. So there's a lot of paperwork to go through that I've been receiving via email on that, but I know I got a credit, but I hope everyone gets a credit, too. Let's see. I think for the most part, that should do it. Oh, one last thing. How can I forget? Today, we honored Monica Doriski, our former city clerk, deputy city clerk. We unveiled her plaque that's outside the city clerk's office. So when you have an opportunity, just walk over. You can see that we honored her. We miss her and can't say enough. Her family participated, her husband, her sons were here, her family members, and it was very nice, nicely done. Thank you, city managers. Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, coworkers that remembered her through participating and coming to honor her. Appreciate it. That should do it, ma'am. Thank you.
We're good, guys? Okay, thank you. So this is my turn. I do have a list of things I would like to just mention. And I want to, once again, send out my condolences to the De Leon family. And when we heard this, that this happened, we were just like shocked and really, really sad about that. You know, it really hit us hard to know that, that there's irresponsible drivers out there that are just speeding and not hitting, you know, maybe distracted. And we don't know what the results of the formal investigation are as to why these individuals ended up hitting the youth. But we just want to send our condolences. And if there's anything we could do, Mr. City Manager, that you feel that we could do for them, staff, or any suggestions from the city council and our treasurer or city clerk, if we could maybe think of something that we could do for them, just to let them know that, more than just words up here, something to show them that we were thinking about them. Whatever it may be, I don't know what it could be. So I guess take that as a directive. So, Councilwoman Manning, so heard that your event was great, a lot of feedback. I heard staff was there and you were at Tennessee Questions. And something that's really important, being able to go out into the community and hearing the needs and concerns of the different sectors in the community. And so Holly Park is one of those areas that we want to make sure that we have a presence. So thank you for doing that. The other thing is, I don't know about you, but when I went to Nashville on one of my little road trips that I had once, I went to eat hot chicken. You guys know about the hot chicken over there in the Nashville, Tennessee area? It's like a big thing over there. Do you, you guys, it's a big thing over there. We just, you wouldn't imagine. You don't know what it's, you know, so we think of chicken fried or whatever. But over there, it's fried, breaded, fried, and it also has that hot element. So it's like, it's pretty cool. So if you don't know what it's like, we have a new place in town called Al's Hot Chicken, which is at one-two-eight-zero-seven Crenshaw Boulevard here in the city of Hawthorne. So one-two-eight-zero-seven Crenshaw Boulevard. Go see what all the buzz is about, at least in Tennessee. And we'll see what it means for us over here. So it's a big thing over there, and they're starting to expand. I think I've seen a couple of these hot chicken places in like Orange County and a couple of other places, right? So go try it out to support our local businesses. Go try them out. See what you think. Last week, I attended the State of the City for the City of Bell, the new improved City of Bell. My friend Monica Arroyo, the mayor for the city, invited me. She was at our State of the City last year. So they're doing great things over there, but one thing I could tell you is that they followed the same, the same setup that we had when we did our State of the City over here, pretty much to the T. So our presentations that we did on the, with the PowerPoints, et cetera, they kind of followed it to the T. But they're doing good things, and there's other cities that we could learn from. And one thing that I remember some of my colleagues in other cities when we were going through the COVID situation, a lot of cities were calling me and council members and the staff, city manager at that time, they were trying, they were trying to mimic some of the things that we were doing, you know, with delivering food out to the community, the distribution of the masks, distribution of foodstuffs. Just there was an endless amount of things, the COVID testing stations. They were, how did you guys get this started? How did you do this? How did you do that? So the city of Hawthorne was setting the example for a lot of these people. And the Parks and Rec, you remember when you were over there? They were calling, how did you guys do this? How do you do this? And I would send them to you when you were over there. So, you know, the city of Hawthorne is a trendsetter. So we hope we never repeat that type of situation again with COVID, that we have to do anything of that nature again. So yesterday morning, no, yesterday morning, we had the AQMD, was that yesterday? Yeah, yesterday morning, or I think it was today, there's so many things going on. We had the AQMD City Selection Committee. There was two candidates for the AQMD representative. And one of them won out by a large majority. So it was just, even if I wanted to support the other individual, they would have won. So the person who won out was a city council member from Lenwood, Jose Solache. One of the things that came up when people were trying to solicit me for, you know, support for that position, for those, for that position, support, supporting either one of those, is the issues happening over here with hydrofluoric acid being used for the production of gasoline for the petroleum, okay? So that's a big concern, and it's been said that that's a very big pollutant that could really affect us. So the person that is in that office is going to have to deal with that situation and monitor that and be able to safeguard us from the air quality perspective. So good luck to council member Jose Solache, who's in that role, and Jawan Hilton from the city of Carson, who ended up putting his name into the ring for that. I wanted to also announce that I went to the Independent Cities Association meeting. I went in the morning, came back in the evening, so I didn't stay over there. I didn't want to have to do that. But it was a conference, and I represented the city as the main delegate from the city. And Sheriff Luna, the new sheriff for the county of Los Angeles, was there talking about different things, things that concerned, of concern to him, the board of supervisors. We know the board of supervisors have a lot of concerns as well. And it was kind of really interesting to hear his take on different things and how he's going to be aggressive when it comes to fighting crimes. So I don't think that, because people out there might be suspicious as to who supported him and how he ended up where he's at. He's very well-intentioned, very knowledgeable. He ran a big police department in the city of Long Beach. And so he has the necessary experience. And let's be honest, even though I didn't see it at the beginning, we need somebody who's able to work with all people, including the, his boss is basically the supervisors, okay? Need to be able to work with people and not kind of be abrasive and divisive. So I think this is going to be a good change for us. Bless you. Another topic that came up was incarceration-to-work programs. Making sure that cities, that we have a manner in which we could give people a second chance that are out there when it comes to kind of, so bringing people who might have felonies, who might have been incarcerated, et cetera. So give them an opportunity to support their families and be productive members of our employment team here in the city of Hawthorne. So something came up like that with regards to cities and how we could look at that. So I'll give feedback on the side to our city manager and to my council colleagues. And then the issue of e-bikes came up. And this issue and this concern came from our beach cities, et cetera. So that these were dangerous and et cetera. Well, ban them, you know? Don't allow them. Well, you can put them into the electrical gear setup in the setting for electricity, or you could have it in the setting for, for you to use your legs to propel yourself. So they were looking at how to banning, how to ban them, but they had like a lot of, a lot of pushback from the families with children and all the people who live along the beach and stuff. So I guess that's what people with a lot of money over there, they don't know what else to do, right? So they have those types of problems. We have a lot of other things we concern ourselves. Oh, and last and not, but not least, okay, so we have the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two annual report that councilmember Montero mentioned, South Bay Whip, all the different things they do. Let's continue to support the South Bay Whip. Even though they're not hosted here in the city anymore, they have our 100% support. The ribbon cutting, guys, for the Jim Thorpe Park, a new playground, new fencing around the playground in certain key areas, new fitness equipment, new lighting, a new formal picnic area. It's going to take place on March fourteenth at ten-thirty in the morning. So if you can make it, go out there for the ribbon cutting, just like we've had in Holly Glen, Holly Park. Now we have, now we have one over here. Is it the thirteenth? Oh, I messed it up. Okay. On March the thirteenth, okay, guys? All right, I'm in trouble now, right? So March thirteen, if you're able to go, please do so. That was a lot of things, but, yeah. Okay, folks, so before we adjourn the meeting, I would like to, well, in a German of the meeting, we would like to do this in honor of Christina Crossway. Her granddaughter's here, former employee, recent former employee for the city of Hawthorne, Melissa. She was a twenty-year resident of the city of Hawthorne until she moved to Florida in nineteen eighty-two. Christina Crossway, Melissa's grandmother, passed away peacefully on February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at the age of one oh seven. She's the matriarch of the Crossway family and was widowed at a very young age with seven children, including Mrs. Sarah Dumani, who's the mother of one of my St. Joseph's classmates, and Mr. Mauricio Crossway, Melissa's dad, who were both, who are both Hawthorne residents. After her husband passed away, she worked in the postal services in Panama until she came to the United States in nineteen sixty-five. She was born in Pese, Provincia de Herrera, in Panama, on June second, nineteen fifteen, so you can calculate that out. One hundred and six, one hundred and seven? One hundred and seven years old. In addition to her seven children, she had twenty-one grandchildren, forty-three great-grandchildren, and ten great-great-grandchildren. Her family remembers her perseverance and strength and will miss her very much. She was a woman who was always happy and in good spirits. So we would like to adjourn in her name and have a moment of silence for her, please. This meeting is adjourned in memory of Christina Crossway. May she rest in peace.